-- present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. Is anyone in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject not on the printed agenda? Seeing no movement. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I always take a stab at it if I could, please.
Please.
Once again, I'd like to thank everybody that's participating in our Fountain Project. I know that it is a big deal to me and a lot of the people in the area being that we've lived on two waterways that were polluted for probably over 20-some years. So I'm proud to announce to everybody that we're on our sixth year right now of no more dead crabs or fish on Marley Creek and Furnace Creek. And we've got boating people coming out there like you can't believe. I'd like to tell everybody I've created a monster because now I get everybody wanting to fish on Marley Creek and Furnace Creek. So fountains are moving forward. There's people calling me on a regular basis asking what's going on with the fountains. Trust me, it's Team Grasso, me, myself, and I. And I'm the only one putting the fountains out, so as they're coming, I'm getting them out as fast as I can, but I will make it to everybody's property. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso. Ms. Trumpauer.
Thank you. In non-Fountain news, I have a resolution I'd like to introduce. If now is the appropriate time.
Madam Secretary, please read the title, Resolution 4116.
Resolution amending Section 6, 105 of the Rules of Procedure of the County Council.
Ms. Trumpauer.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Be it as this is a resolution that concerns our rules, I'd like to hear and vote this tonight. But essentially, the council will recall at the last meeting, we had a fairly robust discussion with the Office of Law about how the council can change its mind regarding a charter resolution. And the Office of Law's opinion was that the charter or state law does not provide a way to do that. I met recently with the county attorney, who is very helpful in coming up with the solution. This would write into our rules the ability to reconsider a charter amendment up until the time where it needs to be reconsidered. So regardless of whether or not you would support repealing any particular charter resolution, I think that this is a good change that addresses the lack of clarity with how the council can go and change its mind. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, and I'd ask for your support, and I'd thank the Office of Law for bringing this solution to my attention.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 4116.
Resolution amending Section 6, 105 of the Rules of Procedure of the County Council.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 4116 is passed.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Walker?
Being as this passed, I'd like to withdraw Resolution 3516.
All right, 3516 has been withdrawn.
Thank you.
And then I believe, Madam Parliamentarian, this would be the appropriate time to reconsider a charter resolution.
Yes, sir.
With that, I would move that the council reconsider's the vote on Resolution 1316.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
I'm sorry, are we, so are we voting to reconsider it?
Yes.
So an aye vote reconsider's?
Correct.
But doesn't, doesn't record your vote on the resolution? Okay.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to reconsider Resolution 1316 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1316.
A resolution entitled Charter Amendment, Copies and Inspection of Records.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Mr. Perutka?
Excuse me, aye. Apologies.
Wait, are you?
No, this is voting on the resolution.
Gotcha, nay then.
Okay.
On resolution 1316.
My apologies, thank you.
Thank you. Nay.
Mr. Trumpauer?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Nay.
Mr. Fink?
No.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative. Resolution 1316 is defeated.
May have a motion that any partial reading of any bill, resolution, or minutes constitute the reading on the whole.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of June 7th and 20th.
The meetings were called to order by the chairman and opened with the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
May have a motion to approve the minutes of June 7th and 20th.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Minutes of June 7th and 2016 stand approved with red. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions being introduced this evening.
Resolution 4216. Resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Anorondal County Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. Resolution 4316. Resolution entitled Charter Amendment Interim Notes. Resolution 4416. Resolution adopting a revised debt management policy for Anorondal County, Maryland. Resolution 4516. Resolution approving the application to the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for a grant. Resolution 4616. A resolution entitled Charter Amendment, the County Council Term Limits. Resolution 4716. Resolution supporting the removal and replacement of the current members of the Anorondal County Board of Licensed Commissioners. Resolution 4816. Resolution urging the Maryland General Assembly to increase the number of members of the Anorondal County Board of Licensed Commissioners. Resolution 4916. Resolution approving the application and receipt of financing for a Baltimore Regional Neighborhood Initiative project. Resolution 5016. A resolution entitled Charter Amendment Legislative Branch Duties of the County Auditor. Resolution 5116. A resolution entitled Charter Amendment Attorney to the County Council.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills being introduced this evening.
That's it. No bills, just resolutions.
Very good. May have a motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on bill numbers 4616, 4716, and 5016 through 5216, and resolution numbers 3116, 3216, 3416, 3816, 3916, and 4016 out of order.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on bill numbers 4616, 4716, 5016 through 5216, and resolution numbers 3116, 3216, 3416, 3816, 3916, and 4016 out of order is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4616 as amended.
An ordinance concerning the issuance, sale, and delivery of Anorondal County, Maryland general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes.
All right, we have anyone from the administration?
Good evening. Good evening, counsel. Julie Musog, Anorondal County Controller, and with me are Bill Hen, the county's bond attorney, to answer any questions that you may have. This is the annual bond ordinance which authorize us to borrow money to spend on the capital projects that were approved in the FY '17 budget. We do have two amendments this evening. I don't know.
All right.
Discuss them a little quick.
Any questions from the council? No? We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on 4616? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 4616.
An ordinance concerning the issuance, sale, and delivery of Anorondal County, Maryland general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes.
I see there are two amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eight.
This amendment increases the amount of impact fee bonds outstanding and the subsequent amount that can be refunded.
Do a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Musog?
This amendment is to correct the amounts of debt outstanding and authorize respectively for impact fee revenue projects. It's a largely technical amendment since the total amount outstanding was correct, but this was an underlying data issue.
Very good. Any questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Eight is passed.
And we have one more amendment. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Amendment Number Nine.
This amendment increases pay-go amounts to conform to the annual budget appropriations.
Motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second?
Second.
All right.
This amendment corrects certain dollar amounts set forth in the amended bill to conform with the final capital budget as amended.
Very good. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Nine is passed.
Phil, since it was amended, will be heard our next meeting, July 18th. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 4716.
An ordinance concerning personnel classified service exempt service.
Very good. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, for the record, Andy Rhodes, Personnel Officer, and with me is Kelly Lovett, Senior County Attorney. Bill Number 4716 as amended implements all of the FY '17 union contracts and also the salary changes for the non-represented as well as exempt employees.
Very good. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on 4716? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 4716.
An ordinance concerning Severna Forest Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Miss Lays?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, for the record, Andy Rhodes, Personnel Officer, and with me is Kelly Lovett, Senior County Attorney. Bill Number 4716 as amended implements all of the FY '17 union contracts and also the salary changes for the non-represented as well as exempt employees.
Very good. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up a public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on 4716? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 4716.
An ordinance concerning personnel classified service exempt service.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 4716 as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5016.
An ordinance concerning Severna Forest Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Miss Lays?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, Jessica Lays, Assistant Budget Officer. Bill 5016 authorizes the county to levy a special tax on the Severna Forest SCBD property owners in an amount that's sufficient to repay a $95,000 loan from the First National Bank of Pennsylvania. This loan will be used for the Severna Forest Community Association to replace and extend a community pier and to repair a community blockhead. The term of the loan is five years. The FY '17 budget that was approved includes funds to make the payments that are required. I have a community representative, Linda Curry, who is the president of the HOA here if you have any specific questions about the community.
Any questions?
Ms. Chair?
Ms. Trumpauer?
Thank you. Severna Park is a, or Severna Forest, Sherwood Forest is a very fine community in District Six, and usually they email me whenever something like this is coming.
Severna Forest.
Severna Forest. This isn't Sherwood Forest. Where is Severna Forest?
It's Severna Forest.
Oh. All right. That's why Sherwood Forest didn't email me. I gotta get my glasses checked. I'll defer to Mr. Perutka.
Very good. Any other discussion on this bill? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on 5016? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 5016.
An ordinance concerning Severna Forest Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 5016 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of 5116.
An ordinance concerning construction code, building permit fees, certain nonprofit entities.
Very good. Mr. Kane?
Good evening, Dan Kane, Department of Inspections and Permits. This bill is pretty straightforward. It cleans up one item from the building code that we adopted this spring with Bill 12315. It inadvertently left out that building permits, that churches and charitable organizations alike pay the minimum fee. It had that they pay the trade permits, but it left out the building permits. So this bill just puts that back in there.
Very good. Any questions?
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Smith?
So what do they, what do they pay now? What out that language in there? Is it?
They would have to pay the regular fee.
Okay.
Which would depend on what they're doing.
Chair.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up a public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on Bill 5116? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 5116.
An ordinance concerning construction code, building permit fees, certain nonprofit entities.
I do see we have one amendment. Please read Amendment Number One.
This is a technical amendment conforming the function paragraph to the body of the bill.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Second, very good. Mr. Kane?
Let Laurie speak to this one.
Yes, Laurie Blair Klassmeyer, Office of Law. This amendment is needed because the language that is shown in the bill is not yet appearing in the written or online code. So the bill was passed and became effective in March, that the language that is showing in the bill, but that is not showing up either in the written code or the online version. So it's a technical amendment.
Technical amendment.
Yes.
And Ms. Chair?
Ms. Trumpauer?
And if I might, so as far as I can tell, besides the amendment, the only thing that's being modified is you're inserting a reference to 108.2.1.
Right.
That's it, right?
Yeah, prior to Bill 12315, the language stopped at minimum fee.
Okay.
The under these various sections, which are the various, as Mr. Kane indicated, the various trade fees was inserted, but what was left out was the 108.2.1, which is where the building permits.
So we just forgot one number.
Just forgot one number, essentially.
And then this amendment is just making sure that it reflects the current bill that we passed last year.
Exactly.
Okay. Very good. Any questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 5116 as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of 5216.
An ordinance concerning Gibson Island Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Amended Assignment Agreement.
Agreed. Miss Lays?
Good evening, Jessica Lays, Budget Officer. Bill 5216 provides the authority for Gibson Island to increase an existing loan that they received from Old Line Bank from $10 million to $10,750,000. This additional $750,000 is needed to complete the renovations to the clubhouse. The original loan was approved by this council, I think it was Bill 1115, in April 19th of 2015. We do have some amendments to this bill as well to correct some technical errors.
Very good. Any questions? All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. I do see we have two people that have signed up for today's public hearing, starting with Matt Kimball and Jeffrey Kane.
I believe both of them are community representatives that are here as our admin reps.
Okay, so no need to say anything unless you want? Oh, nope, you're good. Very good. Thanks for coming down. Anyone else wishing to speak on 5216? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on 5216. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 5216.
An ordinance concerning Gibson Island Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Amended Assignment Agreement.
Please read Amendment Number One.
This amendment corrects the term of the amended loan.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Second, very good. Madam Secretary, oh, Miss Lays, do you have anything else to say to that?
No.
I figure so. Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is passed.
Please read Amendment Number Two.
This technical amendment corrects the typographical error in the year of the effective date of Bill 1115.
Miss Lays, anything to add to that?
No.
No? All right. Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is passed.
Please read Amendment Number Two.
This technical amendment corrects the typographical error in the year of the effective date of Bill 1115.
Miss Lays, anything to add to that?
No.
No? All right. Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is passed.
All right. Are we considering both of those technical amendments?
No, I think the loan, the loan term is not technical. The first one's not.
Very good. We'll go ahead and, since this bill is amended and we're here at our next meeting, July 18th. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3116.
A resolution entitled Charter Amendment, the County Executive Powers and Duties of Office Director of Programming.
All right. Ms. Rhodes?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, for the record, Andy Rhodes, Personnel Officer. Resolution Number 3116 proposes an amendment to the charter to change the title of Director of Programming to Economic Development Officer, which better reflects the duties that the incumbent performs and will allow the question to be placed on the ballot at the general election in November 2016.
Very good. Any questions? Pretty self-explanatory.
Can't believe this has to go to the voters.
Madam Secretary, is there anyone here wishing to speak on 3116? Seeing no motion in the audience, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 3116.
Charter Amendment, the County Executive Powers and Duties of Office Director of Programming.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Were it set up the way they are now? Or were they recently revised to do it the way we do now? Has it gone back and forth?
It has gone back and forth. And it's been some time since we've been doing it in this fashion where it's more than 10 years, I think, 12, I think, where we've been doing it with all of the hearings first and then voting at the end.
Sure.
And really, with any of the rules, if it's changed tonight to this version, you can go back and suspend the rules to do it the old way if you feel that it's appropriate during a meeting to do it that way instead. So we're just, it's, as long as you have those five votes, to suspend the rules.
Understood. I mean, you know, the Chair makes a compelling case that throughout the eight or nine months he's been Chair, we've done it this way every time. But I know there's, were many meetings previously where we did it the current way, which will soon be the old way. And I'm just wondering what causes the Council to flip back and forth one way or another? So, you know, in next term, are they going to flip back? I guess that's not my problem, just looking for a little institutional knowledge.
I don't know whether it's, will be your problem.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Madam Secretary, please read, or please call the roll.
We have two amendments.
We do have two amendments. Damn office alone. No, I'm just joking. I'm just joking. Ms. Blair, can you please read the title of Amendment One?
This amendment corrects a section reference.
Ms. Tate?
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Tate?
This one is pretty self-explanatory. It's the next one.
Very good. Any questions on that amendment? Madam Secretary, please read the title. Or, I'm sorry, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has passed.
Please read Amendment Number Two.
This amendment clarifies the process on voting on bills, resolution, and amendments.
Ms. Tate?
This amendment is some refinements after speaking with the county attorney and Ms. Blair that it ensures that the way the rules are set out, that it makes it clear that you can't immediately vote on amended bill. Because there was some discussion of whether or not the way the resolution as proposed would make it seem like you could do that. So this is just clarifying that, in fact, you will not be able to immediately vote on amended bill. But the others will be able to do with hearing and vote on each of them, provided they're not amended.
Very good, keeping it the way it is. All right. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Do you need, I think we need a motion to adopt.
We did that, didn't we?
No, we didn't.
Before Ms. Tate started.
So move.
Very good. Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye again.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is passed.
And now we'll do the final vote, since this is a resolution with Council rules. Madam Secretary, please call the final vote.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 3216 as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of 3416.
A resolution entitled Charter Amendment Pension Oversight Commission.
All right, Mr. Hammond.
Magic. Good evening. John Hammond, Budget Officer. Resolution 3416 repeals the charter provision providing for the Pension Oversight Commission. The administration believes this is appropriate in view of the fact that for the last 20 years, we've had a Board of Trustees to oversee the operation of the pension fund, and it has worked exceedingly well. And the responsibilities of the Pension Oversight Commission are redundant and indeed are an anachronism from the implementation of the Board of Trustees. We have members of the Office of Law here to comment on any questions you may have.
Very good. Any questions from the Council?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grasso?
Mr. Hammond, to your knowledge, do the current members of the Oversight Commission feel that that commission is redundant?
Well, I know one member does and feels that it's not redundant, that they would like to continue.
Yeah.
But given the track record of the reports and what the Pension Oversight Commission has done over the last 20 years, I would say that their actions speak pretty loud that it is redundant, because they haven't really done much.
Well, I recall getting memos and opinions from them on various legislation that has to do with the pension.
And that's the only thing they've done for the last 20 years.
Well, I read them, and they've been insightful at a couple different times.
And the Board of Trustees can comment too, and the clerk circulates comments, or circulates proposed pension ordinances to the Board of Trustees. And when we feel it's appropriate, we've provided input on those too. So, that's what I say, it is redundant.
Well, are the-
And the membership of the Pension Oversight Commission is essentially the same as the Board of Trustees. There are representatives from the employee groups as there are with the Board of Trustees.
But to your knowledge, do the Board of Trustees and the Pension Oversight Committee always agree on legislation?
I would probably never make that statement, that when you have two, there's very seldom unanimity when all matter is concerned. But there's no reason that any member of the public can't come down and give their opinion on any proposed legislation.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Grasso?
How you doing, Mr. Hammond?
I'm doing great, Mr. Grasso. How you doing?
Doing good. Listen, the county executive, I guess, is in charge of appointing these people. Is that how they get their position?
For the Pension Oversight Commission.
Right. How do they get in there?
They are, there are public members that are appointed, and then there are employee members who I believe are selected by the various groups that they represent.
All right, so how many people would you think is actually appointed in the best of, what is it, seven, five members?
Five.
Five members? And how many do you think come from the county executive, I'm guessing, or us?
Five come from the county executive, four come from the employee groups.
Okay. Do we pay these people anything?
No.
Nothing, right?
I think the charter provision says they're provided with a budget as approved by the county council.
Right. But I mean, it's not like it's a regular salary-type thing, you know, or anything like that.
Right.
Okay. And so just to be clear with some people, because I got a call today, that basically what we're asking the Council to do is to put this on the ballot for the constituents to vote whether they think that this committee should stay there or should not.
Right.
And I think that's always fair to always allow the constituents to kind of go that direction. So I just want to be clear with that, because my one friend called me today, goes, "What you trying to do, remove somebody from oversight?" I said, "No, what he's saying is it's redundant." And what he's saying is, is let the people decide. And thus go before the ballot of the people running around the county. With that being said, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski.
Mr. Hammond, I just didn't know if you had a response on behalf of the administration. I was reading that the Charter Review Commission did not recommend the elimination of this committee, and I don't know if you had a statement in regards to that. I mean, you said you think it's redundant, but obviously they didn't, so I'm just curious on-
Well, just goes to show you that there's a difference of opinion, and I think that the Schu administration feels that this is redundant. And again, I go back to the work, or lack thereof, of the Pension Oversight Commission over the years, that the Board of Trustees has served the county well, and I think it's something that makes sense to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Minister Perk.
Good evening, Mr. Hammond.
Good evening.
You mentioned that there's no salaries for these folks, but is there a budget?
No, they've not requested a budget.
And the organizations that are in the, that are represented in the Oversight, excuse me, in the trustees, are they the same organizations? One-to-one correspondence with the ones in the Oversight Commission?
Actually, there are five employee members with the Board of Trustees, a representative from the Fire Department, as there is with the Pension Oversight Commission.
Right.
There's a representative from the Police Department, which is equivalent to the Pension Oversight.
Okay.
The Board of Trustees also has a member from the, one member from the detention officers and the sheriffs.
So it's four?
Which is not part of the Pension Oversight Commission. There's no requirement to have a representative from that group. There's, the Board of Trustees are required to have a member from the AFSMI units, of which we have two. And there's a representative on the Board of Trustees of the non-represented folks that the Charter provides for, for the Pension Oversight Commission.
Okay, so the trustees is a larger, is a larger group, but everybody that's represented, I'm just trying to make sure that there's a correspondence, that the Oversight Commission, if you did away with it, would you be eliminating anybody, any organizations that aren't represented on the trustees?
No.
That's one.
No, there are five employee members on the Board of Trustees, and there are only four employee members on the Pension Oversight Commission. Now, the Pension Oversight Commission has nine members, the Board of Trustees has 13.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker?
So, of the 13 members that are on the Board of Trustees, how many of those are appointed by the county exec versus, it sounded like there were five members that were appointed by the employee groups? And does that leave the balance of the 13, eight members being appointed by the county exec?
The Board of Trustees provides for three public members that are appointed by the county executive and confirmed by the county council. And then there, in the creation of the Board of Trustees, there are five administration members that are provided for. The Chief Administrative Officer, the Controller, the Budget Officer, the Personnel Officer, and another department head at the discretion of the county executive.
And was that board established in the code through a bill passed by the Council, assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
1996.
So it changed the makeup of that committee, would just require a vote by the Council versus a charter change? If we wanted to change the Pension Oversight Committee, we'd have to require a charter change, correct?
Right.
To amend the charter, to change the group.
And when the Board of Trustees was originally constituted, there were 11 members, and was subsequently expanded to 13.
And what were the extra two positions that were added?
The, it was another, I believe it was another public member and a, I want to say a number, another member from the represented folks, but I-
No, I think you said they could, yeah. They could be active.
All right. Mr. Perk.
Just one quick, Mr. Hammond, which of these groups in the timeline, you might have said this already, which existed first?
The Pension Oversight Commission.
Existed.
I believe was created in the early 80s. And then subsequently, the Board of Trustees was created in 1996.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could just make one point of clarification, on the nine members of the Pension Oversight Committee, they're all appointed by the county executive. The four employee members are nominated by vote of the various employee groups.
Got you.
And I think that is different from the Pension Commission. I think they're actually elected by the employee groups in the, on the Board of Trustees.
Right. Each employee group rep has an election for their member, and that person who wins the election becomes a member of the Board of Trustees.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing no, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. To Bill 3416, I do see we have two people that have signed up, Obie Atkinson and Dale Waldorf. And if there's anyone else wishing to speak on 3416, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is O'Brien Atkinson. I am the Chairman of the Pension Oversight Commission, and I am also the President of the Fraternal Order of Police, representing officers of corporal and below. First, I'd like to say that the Board of Trustees has done an incredible job overseeing the financial end of our pension, the investments, things like that. I think they have done an incredible job. This county has always appreciated and listened to the recommendations and advice of the Board of Trustees when it comes to pension contributions, things like that. And I'd like to, I guess, express the difference between the Board of Trustees and the Pension Oversight Commission. One of my strongest attributes is communication. And when you have communication, it tends to weed out problems. It tends to weed out misunderstanding. Our Board of, our Board, our Pension Oversight Commission does make recommendations on proposed legislative changes. We have made recommendations on several every year as they come up. Recently, there haven't been a lot of changes proposed to our pension, which I think is good. I think the annual report, that requirement, has been taken over by the Board of Trustees, and the actuarial reports are done by actuaries hired by the Board of Trustees. Our funding is nonexistent. We are not budgeted. It's similar to the education allowance that police officers receive. It's in our contract, we receive it, we advertise that we have it, but it's subject to funding. Therefore, it does not exist. When we have our meetings, we have them, we have them online. We go through a very arduous process of putting the legislation or proposed legislation out there for the commission members. Once they receive that information, they respond back to me with their positions or information. I consolidate the information that I've received, push back to each member of the commission, and we come up with a consolidated and agreed-upon recommendation for the Council. It's been very effective, and I think it would continue to be effective for this Council.
Thank you.
At one point I think I should make is that this resolution never came before the Board of, or before the Pension Oversight Commission for a vote. We didn't receive, normally if there's, if there's legislation affecting the pension, we'll receive notification, we'll receive very specific requests to provide input. And our commission actually has not established a position on the disbanding of our commission. But as Chairman, I can tell you, it's a very important role, and I think it's very much needed.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Dale Waldorf, 876 Claffey Avenue, Gambles, Maryland. I'm the very proud President of the Anorind County Detention Center Officers, CWA 2911. Look, you know, oversight's a good thing, you know, and the more eyes that are looking at, you know, things such as pensions and all, the better. You know, I don't see it as redundant. You know, each board has its own function, you know, and, you know, I strongly am against this. I think it's a bad idea. That's why I wrote each of you, sent y'all an email. You know, I think the more eyes that look at the, what is it, hundreds of millions of dollars that are invested, and the more eyes that look at legislative things that come down the pike, I guess, in regards to how that money is spent or kept or what have you, you know, I think the more eyes, the better.
Very good. Thank you.
Cool.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak on 3416? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 3416.
A resolution entitled Charter Amendment Pension Oversight Commission.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Resolution 3416 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of 3816.
Resolution approving estimates of the annual cost of providing health insurance benefits and the employer subsidies used to determine the rates for certain participants under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program.
Very good. Ms. Rose?
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the Council. For the record, Andy Rhodes, Personnel Officer, with me is Anne Bedowski, Doug Hart, and Kelly Lovett, Senior County Attorney. Resolution Number 3816 maintains the same health insurance cost and subsidy split as we have in calendar year 2016. So these rates would continue in effect for all of calendar year 2017. Since we have new plans that went into effect just this year, we only had four months of actual history looking at the cost to the county, and would like to maintain these plans at these rates for an additional year, so that we have more information next year to determine if we need to make an adjustment.
Very good. Any questions? All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak on Bill, or Resolution 3816? Seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 3816.
Resolution approving estimates of the annual cost of providing health insurance benefits.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 3816 is passed.
That's great. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 3916.
Resolution confirming appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anorind County Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
All right, Ms. Rose?
For the record, Andy Rhodes, Personnel Officer. Resolution Number 3916 appoints Corporal Obie Atkinson IV to the Board of Trustees for the Anorind County Retiree Health Benefits Trust. He is going to replace Dennis Howe, who was unable to continue his term. Corporal Atkinson's term will run until June 30th, 2017.
Very good. Any discussion? I know a guy with that same name. He was just up here.
Self-serving, isn't it?
It's redundant.
Self-serving.
Madam Secretary, yeah, that's great. Any other discussion? We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing of 3916. We do have one signed up. Mr. Waldorf is coming up. Anyone else wishing to speak on this bill?
Good evening again. Thought I was just up here. Just want to say that we are, we at Bod Cop support this. Apologize, Dale Waldorf, 876 Claffey Avenue, Gambles. We do support this and have all faith and confidence in O'Brien Atkinson. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title.
Resolution confirming appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anorind County Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
No.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 3816 is passed.
That's great. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 3916.
Resolution confirming appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anorind County Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
All right, Ms. Rose?
For the record, Andy Rhodes, Personnel Officer. Resolution Number 3916 appoints Corporal Obie Atkinson IV to the Board of Trustees for the Anorind County Retiree Health Benefits Trust. He is going to replace Dennis Howe, who was unable to continue his term. Corporal Atkinson's term will run until June 30th, 2017.
Very good. Any discussion? I know a guy with that same name. He was just up here.
Self-serving, isn't it?
It's redundant.
Self-serving.
Madam Secretary, yeah, that's great. Any other discussion? We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing of 3916. We do have one signed up. Mr. Waldorf is coming up. Anyone else wishing to speak on this bill?
Good evening again. Thought I was just up here. Just want to say that we are, we at Bod Cop support this. Apologize, Dale Waldorf, 876 Claffey Avenue, Gambles. We do support this and have all faith and confidence in O'Brien Atkinson. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 3916.
Resolution confirming appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anorind County Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 3916 is passed.
That's great. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 3916.
Resolution confirming appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anorind County Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
All right, Ms. Rose?
For the record, Andy Rhodes, Personnel Officer. Resolution Number 3916 appoints Corporal Obie Atkinson IV to the Board of Trustees for the Anorind County Retiree Health Benefits Trust. He is going to replace Dennis Howe, who was unable to continue his term. Corporal Atkinson's term will run until June 30th, 2017.
Very good. Any discussion? I know a guy with that same name. He was just up here.
Self-serving, isn't it?
It's redundant.
Self-serving.
Madam Secretary, yeah, that's great. Any other discussion? We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing of 3916. We do have one signed up. Mr. Waldorf is coming up. Anyone else wishing to speak on this bill?
Good evening again. Thought I was just up here. Just want to say that we are, we at Bod Cop support this. Apologize, Dale Waldorf, 876 Claffey Avenue, Gambles. We do support this and have all faith and confidence in O'Brien Atkinson. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title.
Resolution confirming appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anorind County Retiree Health Benefits Trust.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
I know, I really hate saying this, I'm swearing up. Aye. Don't ever record that, okay?
Mr. Pruski? All right. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. We do have some folks that have signed up to speak on this bill. Call your name. Please come to the front. I ask you to keep your remarks for two minutes and say your name and address. We do have room for all six of you that have signed up. Betsy Love, Kate Fritz, Ben Alexander, Kate Tate, Kaitlin Clark, and Laney Hummel. I'm sure I'll start with Ms. Betsy Love when she is ready.
I'm Betsy Love, Master Watershed Steward, and I am a board member of the Severn River Association and a constituent of Mr. Pruski. So I wanted to say, our county is on track to meet its obligations in mitigating 20% of impervious surface, which is quite a bit, as described in the financial assurance plan before you. While other jurisdictions are struggling to avoid penalties for failure, we are demonstrating forethought and planning. This is simply good business. We are on target and seeing healthier waterways. Improved crabbing and fishing and maritime businesses and tourism will fill the payoff. Any successful business or household stays on solid ground with a long-range view on finance. The same is true for county government. The financial assurance plan looks forward with targets to meet its obligations. Now is the time not to roadblock. For example, Plum Creek, a tributary on the Severn River, is an example of how dangerous backtracking on funding can be. On this creek where I live, a perfectly healthy man swimming with a simple cut on his leg ended up five hours later in ICU for three weeks, fighting for his life. So now I am currently working on a restoration project within Annapolis to treat 28 acres of polluted urban stormwater, emptying into Back Creek, also a tributary of the Severn. And I'm happy to report that construction will begin this fall due to DNR funding and a number of other smaller grants that I've won. But as a volunteer, I've worked for three years to make this project happen, but it shouldn't be this challenging when the problem is public infrastructure, which is no less a health problem for humans as it is for aquatic species. So I implore you to uphold this financial assurance plan.
Thank you. Ms. Fritz?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Kate Fritz. I'm the Executive Director of the South River Federation at 2822 Salmons Island Road. I'm here tonight to support Resolution 40-16 regarding the county's financial assurance plan. First, I want to applaud the county for its continued leadership in seeking local improvement to local streams by fully funding the stormwater utility fee. This financial assurance plan is proof of Anorundal County's continued commitment to funding local improvements to streams by investing local dollars in local restoration projects. This plan demonstrates sufficient funding in the next five years to meet the county's stormwater permit requirements. In order to expand the investment of the utility fee on private property, the county has set aside a portion of the fee to provide grant opportunities for nonprofits, communities, and HOAs in order for them to implement best practices to reduce pollution in their own local streams. South River Federation is working closely with communities like Hillsmere, St. Anne's School, the Kalarni House, and Lerner Properties at the Harbor Center in order to implement projects to slow stormwater down and filter pollutants before it hits local streams like Broad and Church Creek in the South River. As I testified last year, the stormwater utility fee is making local improvements in local communities, utilizing local dollars. For the fifth year in a row, the South River has seen an upward trend in water clarity. Underwater grass beds were at the highest average acreage levels we've seen in years, and our monitoring indicates an increase in fish diversity in streams where restoration projects have been performed. We are optimistic about the health of the South River and look forward to more improvements due to the implementation of this utility fee. In conclusion, I applaud the county council and the Watershed Protection and Restoration Program for their efforts to both maintain and utilize this fee in a way that is improving quality of life in Anorundal communities. We appreciate your commitment to a dedicated, predictable, equitable, and sustainable funding source. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
Hi, my name is Ben Alexandro, and for the record, I'm not only a county resident, but I'm also the Water Policy Advocate for the Maryland League of Conservation Voters, representing over 2,100 supporters here, as well as the state lead for the Choose Clean Water Coalition, a coalition of over 200 different organizations. About 75 or so are based here in Maryland. So on behalf of our supporters, our voters, and many of our partners, I want to commend the council and the county for the progress you've made, but also urge you to ensure that this plan is as compliant and up to par as it can be. The projects that this financial assurance plan could fund, like reforestation, stream restoration, rain gardens, will support a lot of local businesses, bring jobs to the community, while also conserving our treasured natural treasures. I also want to thank the council and the Watershed Protection and Restoration Program for the great progress they've been working on and that we're seeing around the county. I've actually been working on an initiative to collect and showcase a lot of the best models of projects all throughout the state to show other counties and organizations how they could do the same thing. And we have quite a few great ones from here in Anorundal County that truly demonstrate the win-win successes that the polluted runoff funding that we have here in the county can really implement. So I commend the county for its continued commitment to having equitable stormwater remediation fee that you are leveraging to restore hundreds of acres here in the county. However, I do have one concern in the plan, for the record, and that is the use of nutrient trading. The county should really be financing all of their projects for actual on-the-ground projects, and it's a little bit worrisome that there's this trading in time. The Maryland Department of Environment has not yet written or approved these draft regulations, or even drafted regulations. If and when these regulations come to fruition, then it would make sense to have this in a plan, but until then, it's purely speculative.
Thank you. Mr. Tate?
Keith Tate, 1640 Carnoustie Drive, Pasadena. I'm a lifelong resident of Anorundal County, and I'm also a president of Bayland Consultants. We're an environmental engineering firm founded and operating in District 1 for the past 22 years. I'd like to talk about the substantial business and economic impact and employment impact of the stormwater fee and the financial assurance plan itself. This reinforces business growth in our county. Excuse me. At last year's stormwater fee hearings, I spoke about the uptick in hiring and business growth since the inception of the fee. Bayland and a growing number of local civil and environmental engineering firms continue to embrace DPW's rollout of competitively bid designs for stream, outfall, and pond restoration work. Last year, Bayland moved to new, larger, and more modern facility in District 1. This year, we've expanded by 3,000 square feet of offices. We have 10 new positions for engineers and scientists that we filled this year. And we're getting some of the best people in the region, in the country, to come to Anorundal County to work, from BYU to Auburn, to Virginia Tech, UVA, University of Maryland, UMBC, Towson State, and a couple other schools along the eastern seaboard. These folks are thrilled to work in our county on the Chesapeake Bay, and they're moving here to do this work. We are 40 people strong now, and we estimate that next year's design will support between 150 and 200 construction jobs, and we're just one of the firms working on these designs. The downstream support industries will also see business and employment gains from these activities. And so the council's approval of the dedicated stormwater fee and the fiscal financial assurance plan are creating a stable and predictable environment for business growth, diversity, and prosperity, and we can grow with confidence. So thank you for your support to the program and making business and employment opportunities here brighter.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Hi, my name is Kaitlin Clark, and I'm here on behalf of Water Keepers Chesapeake. We are 19 river keepers, shore keepers, and coast keepers from Pennsylvania to Virginia, working to make the Chesapeake and coastal bays swimmable and fishable once again. We have coalition members for the Severn River and West River and South River in Anorundal County, and I am also a resident. The health of Anorundal County's rivers and streams is vitally important to the citizens of the state and the county. It's essential that the county invest adequate resources needed to clean up pollution in our waterways and to attain wasteload allocations and total maximum daily loads. I want to thank Anorundal County for putting forth a comprehensive financial assurance plan, and I applaud the fact that the county has committed sufficient funding to meet the county's cleanup needs and federal permit requirements. I also commend your efforts with the stormwater management fee, which has played a significant role in ensuring the county having a sound fiscal backing to reduce polluted runoff. Echoing concerns of the League of Conservation Voters, one area of major concern for the Water Keepers Chesapeake is the county's reliance on credits for future load reductions from water reclamation facility upgrades. As MPDES, MS4 permit requires that the county restore 20% or close to 6,000 acres by the end of the permit term in February 2019. However, the financial assurance plan indicates that only 3,800 acres, or 13.1%, will be complete by the end of fiscal year 18, which is just seven months prior to that 2019 deadline. The plan specifies that water reclamation facility credits realized by the end of fiscal year 2020 will bring the county into full compliance with that 20% requirement. However, it's unclear that these expected credits from future water reclamation facility upgrades will ever be fully realized, and I do not want to see the county fail in cleaning up pollution and complying with its federal permit term due to overestimates and reliance on future credits that may not come to fruition. Other than this concern, we'd like to thank Anorundal County for putting forth a sound financial assurance plan and continue to look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you. And Ms. Hummel?
Yes. My name is Lonnie Hummel, and I live in Annapolis Roads, and I'm here on behalf of me. I am a private citizen. I'm not part of any kind of organization. I'm here because I want to express my support for your very, very commendable financial assurance plan. I personally am committed to improving water quality, so much so that I have undertaken a rather extensive project on my own property. I'm converting the entire property from grass to woodland gardens so that it will be a more effective filter for stormwater runoff. And I just wanted to say how encouraging it is for people like me who are trying to make a difference on an individual basis to see a financial assurance plan like this and know that our efforts are really supported by people in government. So thank you very much for your commitment and your great plan.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 4016? Sir, you can come on up. Thank you all. We do have five more spots. If there's anyone else wishing to speak. If not, this will be the last call.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Brett Berkley. I'm the Senior Vice President of Green Vest. We're an ecological restoration firm. We've been headquartered at 210 Najolus Road in Millersville for about the last 22 years. We have offices in North Carolina and New Jersey as well, and have been implementing actively ecological restoration projects with a primary focus in water quality improvement throughout the mid-Atlantic over the last two decades. We have also been an active participant in helping to shape and implement the policies that mandate improved water quality, particularly as it relates to the Chesapeake Bay. This includes stormwater policies adopted by this county. In our view, Mr. Michelson and Mr. Phipps are doing an excellent job in leading this effort on behalf of the county, not just as a simple matter of compliance, but as a lead in the state in innovative and efficient practices to spend very efficiently this county's money as well as secure superior results. We are comfortable with the county's performance to date and the plans as presented to this council for approval. We also believe that the projected funds are absolutely needed to effectively implement the restoration plans as proposed in order to address the continuing need for water quality improvements in this county and the Bay region. On behalf of Green Vest, I'm here to ask you all to approve this plan as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenzie Potter. I'm here to speak for the local chapter of the Maryland League of Conservation Voters in support of Resolution 4016 and hoping that you will support the financial assurance plan as submitted. I'm not going to add a lot to what's been said because I think what's been said is very effective, but I just wanted to add one thought that I am very impressed, and I think a lot of people are very impressed, with how the Anorundal program has combined partnerships with nonprofits, contracts with growing businesses in our county to effectively get this job done and to get it done as cost-effectively as possible. So I hope you will approve the plan and continue to support the program. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. The public hearing on 4016 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 4016.
Resolution approving Anorundal County's 2016 Financial Assurance Plan.
We do have amendment. Please read Amendment Number 1.
This amendment corrects certain figures in the financial assurance plan.
I have a motion to adopt. Second, second in there also.
Could we ask Mr. Michelson to come up too, just in case we have any questions?
Mr. Phipps?
We support. We support.
He supports.
We support the amendment.
Very good. Does counsel anything other than that?
Mr. Chair?
Explanation?
Mr. Trumbauer? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So since this amendment essentially replaces the plan with an amended version of the plan, I think it's in order to ask about the plan. I mean, I just want to make one point, which is, we heard a lot of testimony about the county's stormwater program, which was well-received by the people testifying. But I just want to remind the council, my understanding, and Mr. Michelson or Mr. Phipps will correct me if I'm wrong, what we're being asked to vote on is simply to approve the administration's plan and the department's plan on how they're going to meet the requirements under the state bill that passed a couple years ago. I think it was Senate Bill 863 that required us to put one of these plans forth every two years. And what I heard from the folks testifying, and I'm sure that they've given this a lot of detail, is that this is a good plan and it meets the requirements. So essentially, this plan would then need to be approved by MDE, and I don't have any doubt that it will be approved by the State Department of the Environment. But I just wanted to reiterate, my understanding, we're just approving this, that will then get submitted to the State Department of Environment. So. That's correct. We actually submitted a draft version on July 1, dependent upon approval of the council, because that was the deadline in the state legislation. Sure. But the idea is that MDE will review those plans, and then if they find those plans to be inadequate, then they will bring that information to the attention of the state legislature with the presumption that they will act on that information. Okay. And on the amendment, there was just an error, and it's... There was an error in the Excel spreadsheet. Okay. And Madam Acting, Acting Auditor, this is, have you reviewed the amendment?
Yes, I did review the amended exhibit, and it's fine, and it corrected the error.
Excellent. Well done. Well done. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. The young lady was talking, and also down in here, they're saying the attached FAP indicates approximately 3,800 acres, or 13.1% of the rest, and it will be completed by the end of F '18, seven months prior to the permit. Are we in line with what was supposed to be, because I heard something about 6,000 acres?
So that was the discussion about the nutrient trading in time. Essentially, what we're looking to do is work with, and almost all of the other jurisdictions in Maryland that are in this position or in the same boat as we are, looking to figure out a way to use the overperformance in terms of our wastewater treatment plants to extend our compliance time horizon on the stormwater side.
Right, to make up the difference.
Because the county's clean water plan is really a multifaceted plan that relies on the upgrade of the wastewater treatment plants, stormwater, and then septic upgrades as well. So we believe that we will make progress with the state and EPA on that front, but it's really a question of just the logistical difficulties of implementation is what the holdup is. It's not a question of not having enough money to get the projects done. It's the projects take a fair amount of time to roll out regardless of how much...
Yeah, we've been seeing that for years, right? It's the same thing, the planning and everything else. It takes time to do this stuff.
It's the planning, the permitting, getting through the permitting process. It's a very lengthy process, and it's a gargantuan task to take on 6,000 acres of impervious restoration in five years. So luckily, we've got extremely well-performing wastewater plants that are, you know, performing well below their requirements, and we can take that overperformance and apply it to this underperformance for a time. And then meanwhile, we'll continue to go through the permitting process. The financing is all there, and in two years, get those projects rolled out, and then that trade goes, then that overperformance goes back to the treatment plants.
Well, I got you both here real quick, and this is on the subject. The Glen Gardens project, that's a $13 million project. Do you know where we're at with that?
We're going into schematic design with that project now. We actually are looking to have, we're looking to have a meeting with the surrounding communities probably in the fall sometime to get their buy-in to the plan moving forward. But the really nice situation about that one is that there's only a few landowners. The county owns most of the property that the project will be on, and then there's a cemetery downstream as well as another property that...
Furnace.
Furnace, right.
Yep.
Right. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great. Madam Secretary, please call and roll on Amendment 1.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is passed.
All right. Since we amend that bill, we will hear our next...
It's a resolution.
We can vote tonight?
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Ms. Perutka?
Yeah, thank you very much. I just want to weigh in with another point of view here, another thought. And I am not opposed to the financial assurance plan per se, or any of the, in fact, any of the statements that have been made tonight by any of the folks here. I would echo Ms. Clark's desire, Ms. Clark was up here, her desire for clean water and good stewardship and improved crabbing and fishing, and Mr. Alexandro, and he talked about the different projects and demonstrations that are underway. And I think all that is laudable, and the volunteering, by the way, that was discussed. My worry about this program is that the requirement of the permit itself, I don't believe is lawful. I have questions about the legality of the permit itself. So I find no place in Article 1, Section 8 that the federal government can put these mandates and make these requirements. If this was a plan that was suisprante on the part of the county itself, I'd be much more in favor of it. Again, I don't have any disagreement with the work that should be done or the volunteering and with the ultimate goals, but I just wanted to weigh in because I don't find the authority constitutionally for us to be doing it. My oath would not allow me to vote for it. Thank you.
Very good. Madam Secretary, please call and roll on this resolution.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perutka?
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Nay.
Mr. Fink?
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Resolution 4016 as amended is